Back into open session.
I will make that motion to return to open session.
Support.
Okay, so.
Do you want to run a vote in there?
Uh, yes, could we have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, I'm a little tired.
Members Sherpas.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes. Um, okay.
So, at this point in time, Mayor, members of the City Council, it would be appropriate for the mayor to provide a summary publicly regarding my evaluation.
Okay, all right. What I would share publicly is that overall, in Marcus's evaluation, in the six categories of the evaluation process, Marcus exceeds in five of those categories and meets in the last one. It was overall a very positive evaluation. We have identified some areas that he could improve upon and agree that whenever we do an annual evaluation, there should always be things that we can improve upon. But overall, I think that things went very well this year. So, I, there's a couple of things that I think that we need to talk about, one of them being compensation. There has been a recommendation made from our HR professional, but that's simply a recommendation, and so I wanted us to have the opportunity to talk about that. Todd, I had asked you for some information earlier today in regards to total compensation. Did you bring that?
That's what this is.
Oh, okay, I don't.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I guess I didn't see it.
And then process is.
And, and process is the second thing that I would like, I would like to talk about. So, is there a preference about which we talk about first? Okay. So, Mayor Protem Spelman and I actually met with Marcus and to go over the summary, and we were talking about what his overall compensation package is. We wanted to be very clear what it is made up of. And so, um, should I, should I share that publicly? What it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, the base salary right now is $97,370. We've also got an auto allowance that he has provided for $350 a month. And then there was also put in place a deferred compensation of $10,800. This is on an annual basis, and it was put in place that he would receive that additional $10,800 in compensation, and he could either choose to put it towards his 457 plan or to take the pay directly. I don't know how that's set up or chosen. Additionally, there's a life insurance that is equal to his base salary plus $25,000. And then a pension plan, which is the MERS B4 with a 2.5% multiplier on that, 80% max, and eight-year vested. So, he's vested at this point, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Health benefits provided are medical, dental, and vision, and it's at the same cost as all of our employees are at the city. There's also a severance package in place, which would include a lump sum cash equivalent of six months' base salary, plus one additional month for every year after November 1st of 2012, not to exceed 12 months. And then six months of paid insurance benefits in that severance package. So, with that being said, I know that there was a recommendation for a 6% increase this year, and I would like to open that up to the council for some discussion.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
With an auto allowance, does, does that cover all of the city manager's transportation needs, or does he, how does that work?
Doesn't get mileage.
Does he also drive and then get mileage reimbursement?
No.
One or the other?
No, it's only the one.
Just the one.
No mileage.
Regardless of how far you drive.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the business law. You're only allowed to get reimbursement or your vehicle, one or the other. You can't do both.
Right.
Okay, good. Good clarification.
And then, you know, I know, I know how we set up this deferred comp payment, and I think it was, it kind of followed, if I remember right, it was put into place quite a few years ago now after we stopped paying you a housing allowance. And, um.
The, if I may just help clarify, by my initial agreement with the city for services, it was an either-or. And so, when I originally started working, it was in the form of a housing allowance. And then when that need ended, it then converted into what I have today.
I'm, I'm just gonna say this to the council, that I personally have a problem with this being an either-or and leaving it up to the employee to decide. I feel like if it's deferred comp and we're helping to pay for another plan for him, for his retirement, then we need to call it that. If it is cash that he can choose not to invest, then that needs to be called that, and that needs to be added to the salary, since he has the choice. I mean, for me, it's just, I want to make some decisions because we all know that a salary is only a portion of the overall package. And there's a lot of other things to consider, and this is one of them. And it's a large part of it, because if it's not being invested in a 457 or another plan, then he really isn't making $97,370. He's making that plus $10,800. And so, when we're comparing that salary amount to, you know, the averages and we're trying to get him at that point where he is making what's consistent for that position in similar cities, you know, that's something that we have to look at as the entire package.
And I would say, when I, when I looked at the recommendation and the averages of the different cities, and there was a notation there that the, the average salary for a city manager is 106, I did what you did, Councilperson Spelman, is said, well, I really think it's 97,370 plus 10,800 right now, which would put him at 170 is his compensation. So, my, my thought process was, is we're actually there, we're beyond it, based on the way it's stated in the contract.
Well, I guess I'll continue part of the discussion. I, you know, I'm definitely, I definitely think, I'm looking at the same numbers you, you guys were in the comparisons, I definitely think Marcus deserves a raise. I'm definitely willing to entertain less than the 6% that Todd recommended, but I do hope we find, you know, at some, some increase in there. I think, you know, where we're at as a city, you know, the way the valuation turned out and what I view as Marcus's important part in that process. Grand Travis County is hiring an administrator right now, which would be an easy job to apply from, apply for. And we've, you know, we've been to the MML conference, you know, I've, I've met some city managers. I have, you know, my educational experience is in public administration, and I think that we do have a person that would be easy to lose and would be a valuable asset to any community. So, I definitely support some sort of, of increase regardless of where we come down at, as a starting point.
I appreciate that. So, with the $10,800, let's, let's cross that bridge first. What I heard, what I heard Councilmember Spelman say is that you would like to see it called a base salary of whatever that 97,370 and $10,800 are together, that's his base salary. Or if the preference is that it all goes to the 457 plan, then that's deferred compens, that's towards his retirement.
Yeah, I.
It's still part of the compensation.
It is. It is. So, so.
You know, and I don't know what, I'm, I just don't do well with pensions and not trying to understand what 2.5 multiplier is, 80% max. But I will also say that, you know, if the $10,800 is going into a 457 plan, that's like, that's more than 10% of the salary, and that's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
In itself. And he's, and then he's got a pension on top of it, you know? So, I guess I would prefer to pull it out and put it on his salary.
We do that 10, 10, 8 for, I'm assuming we did, because it provides a tax break, and if that were going to his pocket, he would lose 25 to 30% of that, depending on the tax rate. I don't know that, but I'm assuming.
If it's deferred.
There would be no point to doing that. Yeah, the only point, yeah, because it would be deferred taxes, yeah.
Well, the way it's written now, though, is it could be chosen to be taken as cash.
And then it would be taxed.
We do, we do this for him because that's separate from his limit for his IRA and his, and his, it supplements his retirement as a tax rate. Works, works as a different kind of IRA. And, and he can raise his limit. So, like, if he's putting that in his pocket, even though, you know, it, it's not a cost of living increase directly because you're now paying your, whatever percent of taxes you are on it. So, it is worth more to him as, as that tax-deferred retirement instead of him taking it in there, too. So, like, so to eliminate the function or just to be, you know, consider it a different way, I was just wondering what you were getting at there, like, to eliminate the function of that entirely?
No, I wasn't. I was, again, putting it into perspective of the entire package.
Just the whole package, okay.
I work for Michigan State University, and I get, they pay 10% of my salary into a retirement account, and that's generous.
That's really good.
And this is.
And that's on your base salary, not on an additional percentage?
No, right, 10% is the max, and I have to match a portion of that in order to get that, but, you know, and that's generous. And this is a pension plan plus more than 10% at this point. So, I just want us to be aware of that. And I, and I think, you know, it's coming back to me now, you know, why we did this and how, where it came from, and it came from past practice.
Okay.
And it also.
Contract of the previous city admin, the city manager.
The, he, if I recall, that the previous city manager was paid a higher base, and that in discussing with the housing thing, that you, you accepted a lower base in order to get that allowance, is that?
No.
Am I, wasn't that right?
We hired him in at a lower base.
I was hired in at a lower base.
That's what I'm saying.
That, that was based on experience.
But the, the benefit itself was modeled after what was found in a common ICMA model contract, as well as what the past practice here in the organization was. And when, when I began work here almost nine years ago, it was my request to the, well, actually, it wasn't a request, it was a part of the negotiation of my initial employment contract, that I was needing those dollars as a part of the, as a housing allowance to help with the situation that I was in. And then, a year or two later, as a part of a discussion, negotiated having that converted to the way that it is right now, where I have the option of taking it in cash or deferred or any combination thereof. But certainly, that's an option I'm not looking at losing, which is why I didn't ask for renegotiation of that specific clause within the agreement that I have. But I think this is all certainly good conversation.
Yeah, I understand it better now than I did, okay. Yeah, so.
But I don't get, I don't get both.
Right. So, I guess at this point, now that we, we do understand that what you were trying to do was simply say, this is part of this $10,800, this is part of the whole compensation package, and we shouldn't lose sight of that, and so.
No, it's real money.
It's real money, yeah. So, we're not gonna lose sight of it, but.
I don't want to listen either.
Right. So, really, I think it comes back to, and, and just tell me if I'm wrong, but let's, let's get back to the discussion or the recommendation by HR that it would be a 6% raise and, and.
Actually, can I bring something up on that?
Yeah.
You say I would recommend it a 6%. I really haven't, what I did, and what I always do in the comp, is a comp benefits person who's worked for a company 10 times the size before and put in a whole compensation plan. The, we only deal with factual numbers, that's why we're dealing with the base. Everybody in executive comp has different things here and there, you know, different car allowances, they might just have a vehicle that they're just free to use, they don't even deal with an allowance at all, they have deferred comp. We have, there's other confusion now because you have defined contribution versus defined benefit, which is going away. But in a lot of cases, defined contribution can be much richer. A 10%, like Counselor Spelman has, or like 15%, like other individuals have, that can actually benefit much greater than a defined benefit plan with a 2.5% multiplier. So, we're just looking at base pay, and, and I've, you know, that's what you market when you go out in the comp world. It's too hard to grab all these other negotiated items that a city manager or an executive has. So, we can trust that they have other things out there in their contracts. It's just that they're not as willing to share that, and it's a little bit intrusive when you, when you start mining down to that amount.
One of, one of my questions, Todd, which, which we didn't have in our package is, and what Councilperson Spelman alluded to, is you do generally have a value that's arrived at as the total value of the compensation package, and I don't have that to look at in my considering of where we need to go or where we're at.
It, at times, but they don't always just give that out. Now, we're gonna, you know.
But I was saying, for you to give it to us, what Marcus's package is worth right now.
But he's saying we won't be able to compare it to anything, is, is your point in having?
It's possible with, then you're gonna, going to get into FOIA for information instead of just calling individuals and actually.
You're asking for my.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, I'm saying the value of Marcus's package.
There would be this, though, right?
My, my follow-up comment was just that, it, what Todd was saying, that it's just gonna be hard to compare to other, because we can't get their compensation packages to compare to, which doesn't make it not important, just not hard to compare.
Normally, a compensation package for, a benefit compensation package for, you know, working at the hospital, I'm just gonna pull that out of the air, you know, we plan on 35% of our base salary is what we receive in benefits.
That's close to what this is.
For example, I'm not sure what health benefits are running for the plan, because that's about.
We plan almost 50%. It depends, it depends on what level the position is, but I have some positions where the benefits are even 60%.
Do we have that in the budget?
Wow, wow, okay.
I think it's important to know that, though.
That's something that's.
My rough math was, probably missed some things, but I was thinking it was like 30% for Marcus there.
Okay.
That would be a nice number to have.
It's in the budget, that information.
Oh, as a total line item for compensation for the city manager, you mean?
And how much we cost benefits as.
Do you know what that is off the top of your head?
And just, again, it depends on the physician.
Yeah.
I think we say 65 cents on average of every, of every dollar in compensation is salary, 35 cents is, is benefits. But, but on, you know, on yours, your family health insurance costs the same as, you know, an entry-level position benefits, so that's way more of a percent of that salary than it would be of yours. So, you know, it's, it's, life insurance isn't expensive. Vision and dental, relatively speaking, is not expensive. A family health insurance plan is, you know, these numbers are in the budget, 16, about Your pension plan is overfunded right now, so we don't have to contribute anything. They're still a normal cost. I don't know that number off the top of my head, but.
Okay, I would also remind the council last year of our discussion when we were talking about, you know, base salary and compensation. You know, we recognized that over the years, and we were provided that information last year, that we were behind the eight ball. We had not provided Marcus, you know, like, a regular 1.5% or 2%. And so, last year, we made the determination with the 6% that we gave him last year, you know, we need, we needed to take a bigger step because we had let him down, if you will, in the years before. So, based on that information, you know, we did a 6% last year. I guess what I'd like to do is entertain, from a council perspective, where we feel like we could go this year.
I think, did we, I, it's late, so I'm not sure. Last year, didn't we talk about 6% last year and then another 6% this year to get it up to enough? Was that part of, where we sort of like where we push it in for all, for all, because there were many years that there was no raise at all?
My concern with that, especially with union negotiations this year, is that's a 12% hike in a two-year period.
But they got raises every year, and Marcus didn't for how many years? Seven?
Six.
Six years?
That was part of the conversation, but I don't want members of the council thinking that.
I know. I just wanted to bring that up.
Preconceived notions.
No, no, I know, I know, I just, but I wanted to bring that up because.
No, and it's.
That was my thinking, that we were gonna try to get you up to par with the rest of the employees who had, have gotten regular raises.
Why, and again, this isn't anything against you. When I'm looking at this as an employer, as a business person, I'm seeing right now an income package of 108, 170. And that is above what the average number we were supplied with is, is the average of all the city managers we were given compensation for.
That's what I think Todd was saying, and that's what I was saying, too, those averages don't, don't work with that number because all the benefits packages are hidden.
Well, but, but to go to that argument, then, we can't use those to say, what should Marcus be at, because every one has different variables, so you don't know that the lower ones aren't actually getting paid more because of the compensation packages, or the higher ones are higher. That's the problem with using those numbers.
I think that, I think that we need to look at the base, and I think that we need to, now we are all very much aware of what that compensation package looks like, and remind ourselves the discussion that we had last year, knowing that we were behind the eight ball, taking into consideration Councilmember King's thought on the whole union negotiation, taking into consideration, you know, what T.I. shared was, you know, we, last year, maybe our thought was 6% last year, 6% this year. We have to decide where we are this year, as far as a comfort level of whether or not we are going to suggest a percentage increase this year.
I would strongly recommend that we call, that, then we deal with that deferred compensation paragraph differently. And if it's deferred compensation, then that's what it is, instead of, it's either that or it's salary, you can do whatever you want with it.
So, that would involve, is that involve a renegotiation of contract? Because now you are, we're deciding whether we want to eliminate that line, or you're just talking about pure mechanics of counting it in there, to where if we call it a 3% raise and, and we factor that in there and it ends up being 2.?
Yeah, I don't know, we'll have to ask our attorney.
Oh, okay.
My, my preference would be certainly to keep it as it is. I use those proceeds to help fund my IRA, which is after-tax dollars, that otherwise I'd be in a difficult position to be able to do. And I've been, you know, been using it like that since basically day one, once I was able to get through the housing issue that I had. So, that would, I would, semantics aside, I would look at that as a reduction. Whether or not that's real in as far as a legal definition of it, that's how it would, it would hit, you know, my family and our mother. So, that'd be difficult for me to do.
Okay, so.
I was just gonna say, I mean, if, if, like Sherry was saying, for, I mean, for the sake of math, if you're gonna fire out a percentage and you want us to add 10 grand to that and come up with a number, and then call it the actual percentage increase in ba, the base salary, that, that wouldn't be too hard to do. I'm just saying, so if, if, if we agree that we're gonna give him a 3% raise, a 3% raise, we could add the 10 into there, decide what 3% is gonna be, and then rework our number for the, for the math. I'm just saying, if you want to consider 10, that he's, you know, that 10 in there as part of a 3% to 6% raise, then that can just be done, and, you know, but if you're, if you're looking to rework, work the line item at something different, then we can take it into account. That, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, I didn't have a strong feeling when we were the other. It's just really hard for me to grasp that I could, without knowing what any other contract says related to this. How, you know, how common is this to give somebody, in addition to their pension, more than 10% additional that goes into a retirement plan of their own choosing?
I'm, I'm having a hard time tonight because I want to make an educated decision, and I don't know that I have the information to make an educated decision. I'd wanna know, Todd, what, what is the value of this package? I understand what Owen was saying, but I want to know. I don't know. What's, what's the healthcare cost? What are, what are the other costs involved? So, we can fairly evaluate it. If, if the package is worth X, it's a lot different. If X is $100, I'm making it up, versus $40, that's a big difference in, obviously, if it's only worth $40, we have more room in relation to considering what we want to do. But if it's higher than what we know, I don't want the law of unintended consequence that we're putting too much for. The, the other one, which is a policy one, I'm always leery, because of what Todd said, of comparing your employee with any other employees that you don't know the values of their packages or what the reasoning is behind it. I think that's where you have to base it on the evaluation, on specific metrics, which is my mantra, because if metrics are there and you've met the metrics, I can ignore everything else. I can look at, yes, here what the achievements have been, this is what a realistic raise is in relation to that, and I don't feel I have that.
Well, I, I most agree with you. I think, you know, so last year, they decided they wanted to do the 6% because they wanted to keep up with what he should be paid. Even, you know, that aside this year, I think the progress that's been made warrants an increase based on, like you said, just, just the metric of progress, regardless of what we're doing here, what we're doing there. So, I mean, I would, I would support, I said, at least a 3% raise based on that.
Would you like to make a motion?
I, well, nobody else has thrown any numbers, and I just, I didn't want to.
I was just gonna ask, 3% of what?
I would go, well, 3% of base salary, but I, I mean.
$97.
If, if it was an actual number you guys thrown out, you can run some math. If it was a different percent, you can go up or down, because I will propose a 3% raise if.
Up base, 3%.
3% of base, which is, sound, sounds reasonable if you're entering into contract negotiations. I do agree, 6 is a high number. That's, what is that?
Aim high.
29.
You what?
I made a good joke, I said, you gotta aim high.
See if you get the same.
30.
7, 3, 7, 0, I was also gonna do, yeah.
And just do, here, I'll do this.
Yeah, sorry.
Is your calculator different than his?
I just.
We did it her first way.
2, 9, 9, 2, 1, yeah.
Is that that?
Yeah, 12.
1.03 times 1.03.
8. That's not bad, that's $200 in, in, in your pocket a month, roughly.
Is, is that the same number you came up with?
Yeah.
So, 102, 91?
So, I would like to, if nobody's gonna say anything else.
Go ahead.
Make, I don't have any text for this. Okay. I will.
At 3%, it's about 200 extra dollars a month.
And the after, after taxes is what I just, that was my very, very rough calculation. But I will make a motion based on the discussions in closed session and based on the summarized performance evaluation. performance evaluation that we read tonight, that we give the city manager a 3% increase in base salary. And the number, um, it would increase the base salary to 100,291. That is my motion.
What is it at four? Can you figure that out, 4%?
This is a, I guess, I can't, I can't go down that road.
Okay, we have a support of a 3% increase. Sandy?
Councilmember Schippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
I'm going to make a comment before my vote, because I want to make sure that, that the public knows what I'm doing. It is not that I don't think Marcus is worth that number, it is my concern that I'm not making an educated decision tonight. I think I need more information before I could support that number, and I want to make sure that that distinction's clear, because it is not a reflection on Marcus. So my vote is no.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Before we move on to the second, sorry.
Nope, I was just going to say, move on to the second.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the conversation, and all the comments and all the feedback. And I do certainly appreciate the support of the city council, and, and all of the efforts that we do together as a team, in moving the city forward and progressing to where we have, to where we, to where we are today, and where I think we're going to go in the future. I recognize that this conversation is at times difficult, but I also recognize that, you know, this is the time and the venue in which to ask these difficult questions. I think that I have a wonderful agreement with the city, and I'm certainly still as excited to be here as I was on day one, as I am today.
You're more excited.
More excited, you've got a lot going on. So I certainly appreciate your continued support of me, and thank you again. And I apologize for cutting you off.
Nope, I was just going to say, let's move on to the last thing we're going to discuss.
And so the question then goes back, I think, to the mayor about process, and how did this all take that?
Oh, okay. Well, there was, there was a lot of discussion in, in regards to the process this year, and it was a lot of good discussion. And so, you know, the process that we have been using since I've been a part of the process has seemed to be, we've tweaked it a little bit, but it seemed to have been something that the council has always agreed upon. Now we have a new full council, and there's some suggestions from Counselmember King, that he would like to, to maybe see a different process with additional metrics. We don't know exactly what that would look like, but I, I wanted to just speak about that openly in public, to say that I think that we're all committed to taking the time together as a, as a new council, to, to have the opportunity to talk about, okay, this is what the process is, what do we maybe want it to be next year? And I think that we can only get to that point through maybe some work sessions and some discussions amongst all of us together to agree what that looks like. Did I cover that okay?
I, I think you covered it well, I think, and as I had raised, in, in what I have done both on a public boards and on other boards, most recently on a board I was, two boards I was on, is work with the director or the manager to come up with the evaluation tool, so that we as a board are working with the city manager to come up with the metrics in the evaluation tool, so that everybody's clear on what the goals are. So it's an interactive process. I will say, as part of this, I did reach out to MML and the International City Managers Association. They shot me, I want to say, about 25 different evaluation tools. And what I did come out of it is, they are most effective when they're living documents. You, you don't try to take a form, wrote document, and, and stick a circle peg into a square hole. So that's what I would, would propose, that we, you know, if we have a committee, call it a personnel committee, if it's mayor and mayor pro temp, whoever the council decides on, to collect information from us, work with Marcus, do work sessions, so that Marcus has the best ability to succeed, and knows there's no confusion between us as far as policy, and he as far as what he's carrying out, and, so that we don't misjudge you on what you're doing, because we've helped work and develop that with him.
Right. And I, and I do appreciate those thoughts, and as I said, I, I think we're all committed to that moving forward. I don't feel like, in the years that I have been here, that we've given him less than we could, but like with everything else that we do, we talked about earlier tonight, we can always improve. So together, we'll do that.
Mm-hmm, and, excuse me, when, when we first started this evaluation process, that's exactly what the committee did, is reach out to the MML and get different models, and then tweak it for us, so it isn't like we've never done that. And it was Counselmember Spelman, and the council as a whole, asked them, Counselmember Spelman and the mayor to do it, not just because of mayor and mayor pro temp, but because of their experience and knowledge in evaluating and managing personnel. So, so this, it's not like, it's not like we have not done these things, and that's where we've come to the tool that we have. But I, I absolutely think it's, you know, goals are an important part, and, yeah, if we want to look at things again and, and make it more-
No harm or foul.
No.
No harm or foul.
No, but-
It was great, it was really great discussion tonight.
We could do this process again, and-
It was good discussion. Yes, is there anything else?
I hope, I hope we can schedule a work session for the summer about this sooner rather than later. Is that it?
Okay, good. All right, with that, we'll go ahead in adjournment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Still only 10 o'clock.